Good evening. Welcome to the study session of July twenty third, twenty twenty four. All the order. Donna, you do a roll call, please.
Well, Councilmember Blush, Councilmember Sterns, Councilmember Gilmore, Mayor Nesko,
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman, Councilmember Sap, and we have Councilmember Gutierrez on Zoom.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Tonight, we have a presentation from Troy Nichols, Nichols Group, Government Relations, and we're going to start out with the city manager.
You, Mr. Mayor, sorry to interrupt you. Appreciate it. I just wanted to give Troy, I guess, official introduction. Troy's been working with the city of Shelton for eight?
Twenty seventeen, I think was the first.
Okay, yeah. Say years formerly with another organization, now Nichols Group, but true represents our interests over in Olympia with our state delegation. Blackmakers over there to assure that City of Shelton, our region, is being heard and what the needs are in our community. As you know, we, maybe some of you don't know, that we adopt a legislative agenda every year prior to, prior to the session. Work with council to develop that, that agenda based on what we believe are a staple goals and means here. But also statewide, particularly with AWC Association, Washington City's, like, just like the agenda at the same time. So try to talk a little bit about the history here, some of the successes we've had, work he's doing, what he anticipates happening in the next session over in Olympia, and then we can talk a little bit about how we're going to progress through utilizing his, his services and the council, meeting the council's goal, spending this next session. So I'll ask number Detroit.
All right. Thanks, Mark, for, for the introduction. It's, it's nice meeting several of you for the first time. A lot of new faces on council. And yeah, that, I, I was thinking about the history on the drive up here. Twenty seventeen was the first session we, we put together legislative agenda and then enrolled into lobbying and haven't looked back. So we've had a pretty good run and some, some successes. So I don't know if we're sharing the presentation or not. Can I say, yeah, if you can, I, I don't want to screw anything up, so. This would be easier for me to do it.
Well, he had shared earlier on this one. I did.
So do I move it or do you? Okay. So just wanted to kind of give a quick overview of, of the presentation tonight. And again, I, this is a work session. We want folks to feel free to ask questions. Please interrupt me. I think I just want to go through a quick introduction. Mark did most of that. And then kind of give you an overview of what we've done on behalf of the city over the last several years. That'll get kind of the creative, creative juices flowing too, as to what we've accomplished in areas where we could seek state funding for projects economic development, infrastructure projects for the city of Shelton. Talk a little bit about campaigns because we are in the middle of the campaign season and sort of the outlook for the legislature and the makeup of the legislature in twenty twenty five. And then go into some of the specifics about the operating budget, the capital budget and the transportation budget, because all those dynamics impact sort of what we can ask for, the prospects of, of securing funding for, for some of the infrastructure projects. And then again, talk about some of the areas where we can seek funding. And then maybe turn it over to Mark and we could talk about some things that we've had, having the irons in the fire. Because obviously we didn't get everything we asked for last session. It was a short supplemental. There's stuff that's still in our agenda from twenty twenty four that we can pursue next time. And then we might want to augment or add to that list as well. So please feel free to interrupt as we go along and we'll go further. So go ahead, Mary. So just want to run through some of, again, the list of things that we were successful in securing. And I want to say upfront, I'm only a small part of this process. I help interface with the legislature, but I don't think that we could have been as successful as we've been over the years. Not only without the great help of staff who has to put all the background and put the projects together so we can have a credible ask when we go to the legislature, but also our legislative delegation as well. We've benefited tremendously over the years. And there have been a few changes from Senator Sheldon, now Senator McEwen, Representative Couture, Representative Griffey. Without their working together on our behalf, I don't know that we are nearly as successful as we've been over the years. So I just want to make sure that we acknowledge the hard work on behalf of a lot of people that get these things done. Last session, it was a short session, twenty twenty four. We did receive design funding for the multi-use trail project. And then in what was a bit of a surprise, because it's, and we'll talk about this later. The transportation budget of late has been pretty lean in terms of local projects and securing funds. But we were able to get a million dollars for additional improvements at the Wallace-Neeland intersection. I understand we may have a little bit of work to do on that budget proviso with the department, but that was a pretty big get for for Basin County and that project in Shelton last session. In twenty twenty three, we got a quarter of a million dollars for some of the security access control upgrades. And then fairly large appropriation for the angle side reservoir capacity upgrades. And you'll see water projects have been kind of a big deal for the city over the last several biennium. So next slide, Mary. We did get funding in twenty twenty two for the Shelton Police Department parking facility. Obviously, there were some security concerns there and we were able to address some of those with that money. And then again, another large appropriation in twenty twenty two for the headworks capacity upgrades at the water reclamation plant. Twenty twenty one was a big year for infrastructure improvements. You may remember we were going through a little bit of a pandemic at the time. The federal government was obviously cranking out infrastructure assistance and, and support to local communities. We were able to secure our, more than our fair share of that, frankly, for the three large projects. Or the, the first two large projects listed here, the well one and the reclaimed water project. And then we were also able to get rid of, you may remember what was called the late comer agreement we had with Washington State Patrol out across the highway for the police academy. That was really putting a damper on and adding significant cost burdens to future development out there. And after trying in twenty twenty, we got a proviso. It was vetoed by the governor. We came back in twenty twenty one, working with the governor's office. We were able to secure, not only getting rid of that late comer agreement, but shifting some money from the waste tire removal account to satisfy that, that infrastructure payment that the city was on the hook for. So that was, that was kind of a big deal.
That was three years, wasn't it? Took us to get rid of that. Three sessions?
Took two. We got a, we drew a veto in twenty twenty, which the next slide, it's on there. But we kept at it and did a little bit of early groundwork at the governor's office on the second try. Interfacing with a couple of different personnel, somebody retired and we had a better outcome. And then we did get the last, in twenty twenty, the, the last seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to complete the Shelton YMCA. In twenty twenty nine, again, we first got our first installment of resources for that Wallace-Neeland Sheldon Springs intersection, which I think is starting to flow, but it's been on the books for a little while. And I can't help not mentioning the Civic City parking lot. It's nice to drive by that, see those basketball hoops and that, that pavement. Because it took a long time, not only to get the funding, but then to get, get the project completed. And then twenty eighteen, that was the first year as working with the city on contract as their lobbyist. Downtown Connector is kind of a big deal. That first roundabout now kind of changed kind of the flow of the city down there. And then we were also successful in getting some, some capital budget money for the Timberland Library repair. So that just kind of gives you a flavor of where we've been over the years. And maybe get the creative juices flowing in terms of what we might be interested in pursuing in the future. So next slide, Mary. So again, politics happens. You're, most of you are aware of this in the Senate. The current legislative makeup is twenty nine Democrats, twenty Republicans, similar split in the House. I think that, given the dynamics that we've seen, especially for the last few weeks, it's hard to predict what the outcome of the campaigns are going to be in the general election. But with redistricting, the sophistication of legislative redistricting software, so few districts are any more competitive. So unlike in previous decades, it's hard to predict seeing the big swings in the partisan maker makeup of the legislature from one election cycle to another. I think regardless, we'll probably still see significant Democratic majorities in the legislature in twenty twenty five, barring some, some game changing event. So all things being relatively equal, I think we'll see the same leadership in twenty twenty five. Speaker Jenkins is expected to return as speaker. But if you recall, Senate Majority Leader Andy Billy announced his retirement at the end of last session. So he won't be back. There'll be an internal caucus battle for that new position. And we don't expect to, to get word on that until after the November elections. And then on the Republican side, it's relatively stable. Senator Braun will likely be back as well. Representative Drew Stokesbury is the caucus leaders there. So Mary, the slide. Wanted to point out some further dynamics. The chairs of the fiscal committees that we tend to traffic in with these requests are going to remain largely unchanged. You know, the Ways and Means Chair, she's not currently up for reelection right now. She's in the middle of a four-year term. Representative Ormsby, the operating budget chair from Spokane, he's running for another term. He's in a relatively safe seat. The only one exception to that is the Democratic lead on capital budget, Senator Mark Mulley. As you understand, it's running for governor and won't be back in the legislature. So there'll be a new Democratic lead in the Senate for the capital budget, but a lot of stability. And the second bullet point is something that I referenced earlier. Again, the predictions are highly volatile just because of the actual picture right now. Either party can, could pick up a few seats here and there. Large swings are probably not on the table. But the key point I want to make, particularly in the capital budget, in order to issue bonds for debt, and that makes up a big chunk of the capital budget, it requires a three-fifth vote of both chambers of the legislature. Right now, the current makeup partisan split, if Republicans lose one more seat in either chamber, they'll dip below that threshold. And so if that happens, Republicans will just candidly have less say in what goes into the budgets, particularly the capital and transportation budgets, because they don't have that leverage on the bond vote. It's been a long time. It's been early in my career when I was a staffer, when Republicans dipped below that threshold. And I don't want to say that they won't get anything in the budget, because frankly, these budgets have gotten more bipartisan over the last few years. But they probably will get as much say in those budgets as they would if they had that bond vote leverage. So there is something at stake for the elections on the Republican side. If they lose seats, they lose that leverage in the legislative process. And just real quick of our thirty fifth legislative delegation, as we talked about Senator Drew McEwen, he's midterm on his Senate seat. But he's running for Congress. If he's successful, there'll probably be an appointment to fill his, his slot. I would think that either Dan Griffey or Travis Couture would probably get, be the front runners for an appointment like that. But if he doesn't, Senator McEwen's not successful, he'll be back in Olympia and still serving, representing the thirty fifth legislative district. So next slide, Mary. So shifting a little bit to the operating budget dynamics. And I talk about the operating budget, not because we typically go there for, for projects and the resources, but because they have an impact on the capital budget specifically. And for the first time since the pandemic, we got the June twenty twenty four revenue forecast and it was down. After the initial dip, after when the pandemic first hit, the revenue forecasts have gone nowhere but up every quarter since then. Except for now, with the last revenue forecast that came in last month. So for the current biennium, it was down almost half a billion dollars. And then projecting out for the next biennium, it was down one hundred eighty-nine million. Those aren't big numbers relative to a seventy billion dollar budget, but it does show a trend. And then as, as revenues tend to dip and the budget on the operating side becomes a little tight, the first place budget writers look is, is the capital budget to see if they can sweep funds or use that to maintain programs in the operating budget. It just adds additional pressure and thus reduces our ability to secure funding for infrastructure projects and buildings. And I included that quote from David Schumacher. He's Inslee's budget director. Basically sending the word out in an article this, just this week to state agencies that they shouldn't be asking for new programs or new money, because they're already signaling that the operating budget is going to be fairly tight. So next slide. One of the other things that I always mention when I give these presentations is that about seventy-five percent of the state operating budget is quote unquote constitutionally protected. So that covers things mainly like K. Philp spending, which is almost half the budget, just right off the top, after the McCleary decision. Aramont Duty of the state, a lot of that money is already accounted for. And then you have what the state is contractionally obligated to, to pay for, that pensions, labor contracts and debt service for capital budget bond, general obligation bonds and whatnot. And then in Washington State, we tend to budget on a current service level process. So basically, they, they spend what it takes to maintain existing services. And then anything extra has to be accounted for and added on top of, of the current service level budget. One of the big dynamics that we're waiting for the outcome in November are the three initiatives that are on the ballot. The repeal of the Climate Commitment Act, the capital gains tax repeal, and the Long Term Care Act, making that voluntary. Now, regardless of how you feel about those, those initiatives or whether they pass or fail, if they do pass, that will at least initially have a significant impact, not only on the operating budget, but the transportation budget and the, the capital budget. A lot of the resources from the auctions of the Climate Commitment Act go to those, those budgets and pay for programs and whatnot. So if they go away, it's obviously going to crimp what's available in all three budgets moving forward. Yes, we go to the next slide. And then moving to the capital budget, as I just mentioned, if there's an economic slowdown or recession, there are some predictions of that. The revenue forecast seemed to at least indicate somewhat of a slowdown. That creates pressure to sweep, sweep the capital budget to support the operating budget. Last, this current biennium, there were four point seven billion dollars in, in general obligation bonds that were issued. That supports the capital budget. It's about two thirds of the funding for that. And because the revenues, except for last quarter, have grown over the last couple of years, that's what dictates what the bond capacity is. So we expect that to be higher than that four point seven billion. And then one of the big areas that we get funding for projects in is they're called local and community projects in the capital budget. And these are individual projects that legislators can request on behalf of a, an interest group or a municipality or county. And it tends to be a long list. And just to give you a little bit of perspective, in the current biennium, there was just over three hundred million allocated to those projects, five hundred and twenty-five of them total. But these typically aren't big projects. The average is just under five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And they range anywhere from a fifteen thousand dollar project up to five point seven million for a, a water system project that I found in the capital budget last biennium. So the range is pretty big, but the average is, is just a little over half a million dollars.
That statewide?
Yeah, that's for everything across the state, every local community project that was in the budget. And not all legislative districts are created equal, which is a good point. You know, some districts have universities, some have a lot of state buildings. Mason County doesn't tend to have that. And so it's disproportionate in terms of how much funding we see, just because they have more state needs or more state infrastructure and buildings that, that need to be taken care of. But we do punch out of our, outside of our weight class quite often, we do, are fairly successful in what we are able to bring back home to the thirty fifth. So next slide. And then just to give you a little bit of an idea on what the capital budget typically will pay for. Acquisition of land and buildings, construction of new buildings, major repairs, reconstruction in addition to existing buildings, utility landscaping and infrastructure work, planning and design. And then there's a portion of every project that is dedicated to just the administrative cost of, of getting that money out the door and managing those grants. They typically, the projects need to have at least a useful life of thirteen years and involve some kind of design architect or engineer. And when you're issuing twenty-five year general obligation bonds, they typically are more stringent on these rules because it's, taxpayers are taking twenty-five years to pay off those obligations. So there's a little bit more scrutiny there. Some things you won't see on this list, things with wheels. A lot of electronics or, or electronic infrastructure is typically not funded, just because, again, the funding source is typically bonds. And so they don't like to pay for things that don't have a life of thirteen or more years. So think buildings, things, think land, think pipes, think infrastructure. That's typically what you see in the capital budget. On the transportation side, this budget, fourteen point five billion dollars. But it's been a struggle and you, you've all read the paper and you've seen some of the, the typical, typically traditional transportation revenues, like the gas tax are, are, tend to be shrinking as we make the shift to more fuel efficient vehicles, electronic vehicles. That gas tax, even though the, the cost per gallon is not going down, it's just the total gallons that are sold are going down. So those dollars don't go as far as they used to, even, even ten, five years ago. Just give you some perspective on the Climate Commitment Act. There's in the current budget, one point three billion from those auction sales of credits in the current budget. So the Climate Commitment Act goes away. It gives you a little bit of perspective of the hole that's going to be there moving forward. In the last couple of biennium, particularly in twenty twenty three, we were told, legislators were told early on, don't expect a lot of new money for local projects. And this has been the case for the last couple of years for these very reasons. You've had a, a decrease in the available revenue from traditional sources. You've had some mega projects that have had some cost overruns across the state. And so we've really been in triage mode on the transportation budget for the last couple of biennium, which is why we were pretty fortunate to get that million bucks for Wallace-Neeland stretch last session, because we have been told for years not to expect more. Now, whether that's still going to be the case, accession is sort of up in the air. Depends on the outcome of a lot of different things. And if I had a crystal ball, I would tell you, but I unfortunately don't. And again, a lot of that's going to depend on the outcome of I twenty-one seventeen, other factors. We just won't know until we get past November and, and see what we're dealing with come January. So that's a lot of information to kick out there. I wanted to turn it over to, to Mark, because I know he has some ideas on, at least to start the discussion on what we can pursue next session. But that's sort of this picture as I see it now.
I guess before we dive into that, do you have any questions for Troy just on process, what's happening in Olympia before we kind of get into the project discussion?
Is there any, do we have any CCA money we're holding right now?
I believe so.
But I know the transit concern that they are holding, you see money and it goes away and.
Yeah, the indication is to get that committed as quickly as possible and, and spend those funds as fast as you can.
And while there's been pots of that money around in the state budget for the last couple of biennium, most of that has had to have been obligated. So there's no, there's no magic. A lot of money sitting around from the feds as there has been in the last couple of years.
Okay, I'll just recap kind of the twenty twenty four legislative agenda. We put this together with Troy's assistants, council approved it back in, on November twenty first of twenty twenty three with specific asks in a couple categories. One was transportation. Wall Street Boulevard has been on our, on our ask list for four or five years, maybe more. We're seeing that they're not necessarily failing per our standards at this point, that they're failing at certain points of the day or they're just not performing well at the intersections at Wallace, thinking Olympic Highway, Wallace, even Spring Road, Wallace, Johnson Prairie. Again, lucky enough to have a million dollars from this last session and six hundred fifty thousand dollars from twenty.
We get twenty-one to twenty-two.
Those, those are being obligated as we speak. The, the question is, is how do we spend those? One million dollars right now is specific to, specifically identifying for pedestrian, ADA and bicycle facilities. Building a roundabout at any of those intersections is out of the question right now of available funds. So it will come back to you probably in the very near future about how to couple that with the six hundred fifty thousand dollars specifically for Spring Road and how to benefit the community at that intersection, whether it's resignaling, design on the roundabout, seeking funding, funding later, some other. In the daytime, we have some options to upgrade those lights and signals to maybe have some dedicated turn signals in there in the interim to meet some of those needs, especially during peak hours with school letting in and out. But those are the major transportation elements. The multimobile path, again, was on our list last year. We were looking at, received two hundred thousand dollars for design for that project. We have about ninety percent design at this point for removal of the tracks and developing at least a gravel, crush rock trail in, down that right away. So it'll be kind of the interim improvement that we see over the next several months. But we'll put that two hundred thousand dollars to work certainly on with, with that project. There is social needs, homeless mitigation sites, affordable housing. Behavioral health resources have been at the top of AWC's list. As we all know, we're experiencing a lack of resources for behavioral health in our communities. They're very difficult to address in small organizations such as the city of Shelton. So any assistance from, from the state is certainly warranted and has been at the top of the AWC's list for the last couple of years. AWC also highlighted the continuation of investing in infrastructure. We need affordable housing. We need housing level levels. Smaller, small jurisdictions like the city of Shelton have meets and gaps in our, in our infrastructure. So continuing making that investment in infrastructure will help build, build out housing and add to our housing stock. Recruitment and retention of police officers has been another one of their priorities. There's, I don't know, there's many different ways to approach that, I think. And, but not necessarily, it hasn't necessarily been funneled apparently down to one avenue, but it's certainly a concern of ours. It's hard. Again, I'm going to keep harping on the lack of resources a small municipality has like the city of Shelton. But when you, when you start talking about competing with some larger jurisdictions, more resources and offering citing bonuses or hard, higher salaries and things like that. It's, it's, it's difficult to, to retain police officers if they are just looking at total compensation. If you're looking at the community and the organization that they work for, I think we compete very well. But if somebody's looking for that, that compensation, then maybe we're, we're falling behind a little bit. Also on AWC's list this past year was property tax cap limits. I think since about twenty years, the one percent, I think, property taxes adopted in the legislature. They've asked for at least some consideration to amend that to be associated with an inflationary rate of some sort. Gives a little more flexibility for, for local jurisdictions to to generate some more income on property tax to address some of the needs in our community that specifically would go to things like unfortunate public safety and potentially behavioral health and affordable housing. Back on the infrastructure side of things, water has been a major topic. We're lucky enough to receive one point eight five million dollars for angle side reservoir. That is under design right now and should alleviate many of our concerns on the south side of town. But we still have the overall storage issue. We have an ongoing study with consent right now that is reviewing all of our, all of our storage capacity, what our potential reservoir options look like, where the best location is, how they intertie in all of our pressure zones. We had a primary meeting, I guess, last week. They're continuing to refine that. We should have more information later, but it all leads towards a new reservoir somewhere in the one million, one point five million gallon range in this community that helps serve all of our pressure zones. We have aging infrastructure. I think you've heard within those reservoirs as well. We've got fifties and sixty vintage reservoirs that are on the smaller side. Um reservoirs that are on a smaller side, um that aren't seismically retrofitted. There's some of our sun on critical slopes. And so we need to address those at the same time, take those offline. Uh they become a liability to the community. Do we keep putting money into these this infrastructure and maintain this infrastructure, improving these over time? Or can we invest in in new infrastructure that's gonna serve us better in the short and long term? Uh the satellite wastewater treatment plant, also we received funding past that design for these for the uh. Reclaim water tank that's happening right now. We have a conditional use hearing. August first, I believe, for the tank. So that requires a condition is permanent. So it's going through on August first. Hearing from that will continue uh working through that project at the same time. Um and then I think to wrap it up, basically, we are um we just met with the port of Sheldon. They were successful in a. Federal appropriation, a a community project funding uh grant from uh. Comes from Kilmer's office, uh about one million dollars for an extension of a sewer line from uh. On spring roads from the high school to highway one-on-one. The app total ask was about two point eight million dollars. It wasn't really funded. So with the with the funds that were appropriated, we're looking at doing good sign on that project. Uh so we could have a shovel ready project in the next nine months to to the year. And so that could be a right project to uh to ask for additional funding to to run the state uh to belt out that sewer line. Uh that only opens up um economic development opportunities near the port of Sheldon. Uh because our satellite land doesn't necessarily have the capacity to serve that entire area, but also some underserved areas around. Spring road out to one-on-one, as you know, the every mobile stage hidden haven in some of those areas that are close proximity aging. Aging infrastructure on those single lots with well, some of them have some. Um class B or group setting systems, but uh they're quite old. Some of them are are failing and uh not the uh. Uh not the best case scenario for some of them, uh some of the uh individuals that live in those areas. So.
Probably the wrong meeting, but extending that the the water out to the port would require annexation, correct? We're not gonna invest any of our money in that.
The the, well, the water line, this is sewer line.
Water.
Yeah, sewer line. Yeah, it's in the UGA. So. I mean, that's that's counted decision, whether that's whether that's extended there or not. It's. Um we certainly have other needs within the city of Sheldon. Uh but it could open up some economic development, like I said, at the port of Sheldon. Yeah. Um our our current code does require um a waiver of annexation or annexation. A waiver protest annexation or an order annexation outright uh if you connect to one of our utilities. I think that better answers your question, right? Yeah, sorry about that. Um. Uh AWC has also talked about uh local control of unfunded or underfunded mandates from the state. I think that's really important. Should have harp on again and. Like a broken clock, the uh the smaller jurisdictions, small municipalities, limited resources, those those mandates that come down to us. Are um are a burden to the city of Sheldon and and continuing to demonstrate to our decision makers. And maybe that how they affect us and how we can best put those in place um with available resources. Our need to continue, need to continue taking that opportunity to communicate with them.
So would that be something we talk to Troy about with the with the Supreme Court and the bar association? Rules coming our way, would that that would be a huge priority for for us and the county.
In defense, I mean, watch the Supreme Court make the decision, but certainly the opportunity to seek funding. From our from the state to offset some of those costs or address the availability of defense attorneys um. Needs to be considered.
We understand they're they're not there, even if you had the money for them, you're not there. So I mean, somebody's gotta fight for that. I don't know if the legislator legislative delegation can set this, set up something to go after. Or even lobby the Supreme Court to to not send this or adopt this uh these guidelines, because it's gonna be huge. I mean. We heard, I mean, we went attended AWC listening session. I've uh Councilmember Sherman and I have sat in on the public safety. So meetings and um they're it's gonna be pretty big. They they're saying Seattle could take every single public defender in the state and still not have enough. And the rest of us have none. So it's gonna be a pretty big deal.
I think that's where we look for some support, right? Um whether it's. Uh some allocation or offset uh of the costs associated with um. Hiring in legit events, you know, and and they say it looks at how those services are being provided throughout all of our communities rather than allowing. Or um we're standing by or whatever you however you wanna. How how we wanna say it, uh having these larger jurisdictions be able to to essentially, you know, commit. To hiring the available defense attorneys. Maybe there's more attorneys out there that would go to in the field. Uh if there's some other resources uh provided to them as well. Because that's another option, not just taking what's there available now, but encouraging those to get into the defense field.
The legislature is gonna have a lot to say on this come January. And then Mark has mentioned AWC. I know we focused tonight mostly on sort of the infrastructure projects, but I am available. You know, AWC does a pretty good job representing municipalities in Olympia and legislators tend to listen to them. But if there are circumstances that are unique to Sheldon, where we can say us too, here's our story. I'm available to share that either in writing or testimony with our delegation. Or if there are policy issues that come up that may not even fit within AWC's agenda, but it's something unique to Sheldon. It's not infrastructure or transportation related. Uh I can carry the banner on that too. We just haven't had a lot of that over the years, just the focus primarily been on getting some of these infrastructure projects in place. But I I am available to do value here. The only other point that I would.
Please.
Mark um is, I think, um you know, kind of glossed over this, but typically the state when we're talking about transportation or infrastructure projects. They like to be the last dollars in, not the first.
Yeah.
And so where we can demonstrate some community investment, uh some resources that the the city has put in. Or if there have been studies that we have funded or participated in that shows the need, um all of that stuff should be accounted for. Because the last thing they want to do is come in with the first seed money. They wanna help finish projects, not get them started. I know we've done a really good job over the years, uh Mark and others before him of of demonstrating that we put skin in the game. And then um that builds our case for when we ask for the appropriation uh during the legislative session.
That's where the transportation that district has been a great asset, uh because it's supplemental funding specifically towards transportation. It shows there's local skin in the game, if you will. The voters proved it. There's there's the ability to offset the co- the the. The investment um coming out of state transportation, but just so. Uh with the sunset of that in twenty twenty-six, we have to be conscious of how that affects um future transportation budgets.
The only other thing I'll point out is more of a process comment, but I'm glad we're having this discussion in July. Um as early as we can get our priorities nailed down and and sent to our delegation, the better. We've heard that from them directly.
Yeah.
Um I I've always heard that in all my work that, you know, you can't come to the table in January. It's too late. Uh so the quicker we can get our inventory, have you prioritize the list and get it to our delegation, the better chance we have of being successful. January, because if you start in January, you're not you're not there too late.
And I think that's part of the process. I'd like to have some feedback, you know, um what we just talked about is if it's anything kind of. In the back of your minds, you want staff to research, address, rule to put together, you know, more maybe or comprehensive list. Get that back to you, uh give some more feedback and then we'll start developing uh that priority list. And try to set up a meeting with our delegation here, uh maybe early fall. Uh and really have a sit down with them, because I think it's really beneficial to have a have a one-on-one across the table. And show and demonstrate those needs, even take them for a tour and show them some of the areas that we're um speaking about. Because that, you know, that the memory is ingrained, right? The visual is there at the same time and doing that is is possible. So. I'm open to suggestions and comments.
I I personally, I think I I know we're in the study. Water, the water storage is is huge. I mean, I mean, that could cause us down the road. Just a a, you know, halt and building if we don't get proper storage for fire flow and everything else. So I think that we should still continue to look for funds to build that million and a half gallon tank. If that's what we need, um that is one.
Water, 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 more water. Quality and quality of water, emphasizing water. That's the that's the logjam for us to grow is providing a clean source of water for everyone. I'd also like to include the tribes in this. How can we work together to preserve our water? Those are my two priorities for next year.
I was gonna say, yeah, and and housing, housing is important as well. You know, I think of regulations. I don't know if there's anything that that's anybody's looking at. Regulations are getting more and more complicated and expensive to uh to build a home. Uh whether it be electrical or uh plumbing and and uh breakers on top of breakers and. Energy code is 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 getting harder and harder to and adding, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars to a house today. And how can we have affordable housing when, you know, when the first eighty thousand bucks is it's it's new codes, you know? I don't know if it's eighty, I'm just threw that in the air. So but I know it's a lot. I know it's getting more and more expensive to build a house.
Affordable housing is important, but it's already flooded, so. Ties together.
They're linked, they're linked to each other, but water is the logjam.
And also, I don't know, you know, what we're looking at, what's our our sewer system's now fourteen years old and, you know, we also would like someday, I don't know. You know, to uh not put anything out in into the bay and spray filter injection wells. I don't know states. Maybe be into that here and tribes in the future. So keep that on the list for maybe if it's even if it's the list that we just do every year, you know.
You talked about that nor northern diversion project, it'll take the entire north side of town to the satellite plant. Obviously, we need to add some capacity to that plant. You need a pump station in Maine. Uh we we targeted a a federal request. Uh on those lines weren't successful, but again, that's a message you need to keep, you know, keep communicating. Because um I don't wanna say it's squeaky wheel, but if 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 this is a need now, it doesn't go away and we need to keep communicating that need. We just think we're not receiving the funding first time and walk away from it. It's not gonna be funded again. That's not the case. It's not the case. Things change. The need stays the same, the need most likely grows at the same time.
Keep being good stewards of uh or or waters. I mean, we got, nobody's looking at probably today, but we've got yesterday, I got a letter. From Department of Ecology of four years now, uh excellence as an award for our sewer system. And two years of in a row awards for the reclaimed waters. So. That's pretty exciting. We got staff working really hard on that. I think we'll probably hear more about that in the next few meetings.
Tribal support is has been key on some of our successors. I know they were helpful on the laycom agreement and some of our water quality projects that we pursued in the past. So definitely need to stay engaged there. Um that could that could make the difference. They carry a lot of influence in Olympia uh in our community. So.
This is this is our chance uh to ask what we'd like to see. Um anybody, George, you have anything that? You know, this is asking for money, asking for legislative changes, support and and bills that are coming up or already passed that we'd like to go away. Um, you know, like we, obviously, we had the one last year that went away or got changed, the pursuit bill, which was hindering our officers from doing their jobs and. Uh stuff like that, you know, you can ask anything. He take notes and.
And this doesn't close the door.
Yeah.
You know, we can continue having conversations or sending email or schedule, schedule meeting, but we can continue having these conversations over the next several weeks. But we certainly want to uh be cognizant of of our our delegation's timeline. And and as they move closer to session and said, getting in, getting the information.
Yeah, I think on your mind, Melissa.
I mean, I'm just gonna go ahead and echo what's already been said. Any sort of money that we can get towards infrastructure projects like the reservoir project. That'll take some of the heat off of our ratepayers. George, I know that that's a big one for you. Like, if we could get something like that. Could relieve people. And if we can get more building coming in, it's going to build more local revenue. So we'll be less reliant on these sort of funding sources. So those are the big ones that I'd see, like infrastructure, or if we can extend sewer and we can get more growth that way. Again, it's another great way for us to build our own local revenues. So those sorts of things are are key items for me.
I also think we can build up our capacity for the sewage treatment plant and maybe uh work with the county to uh work on the solid waste problem. And uh further including upper water. So anything having to do with water, including um hyping up our. Or we using our solid waste capacities and growing that as well.
So what I'm hearing from our constituents and our community is their priorities are safety, housing, water and jobs. So they all playing in together when they're in other and someone they're telling us that's their priority and that's all. Completely agree with asking check. That way it's gonna save water, uh housing and law enforcement or defense attorneys, anything we can do for safety.
And I also wanna be a resource to everyone. Uh Mark does a really good job of of asking me questions and I can help get answers. If if you have questions that, you know, you go home tonight and think of other ideas, we can always run those trap lines and see, you know, what we can do. Um, I I'm fairly open. My my email and cell is on, it's online, so it's also on the presentation from tonight. But yeah, anything you can think of, uh questions, uh this doesn't have to be a one-shot deal either. I'm always happy to come back as we refine this agenda, whether it's in a work session. Or uh just in a meeting upstairs uh with the delegation. Um I'll be around, happy to do that. Um I'm I'm just down the the highway, right on the county line. You know, my wife practices law here in town. So I have a lot of uh connections and affection for the community. Want to be here as a resource for all of you.
Anything? Anybody else have any? All right, council have any new items for discussion tonight? Then we will adjourn the study session at six forty-six P M.